Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And would you please join with me the pledge allegiance? The flag is over there. Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sounds like we're in the Grand Canyon. Okay. So, city clerk Kathy Watson, can you do roll call for us?
Mayor McGowan.
Here.
Matthew Lund.
Present.
John Glondo. Ruston Weaver.
Here.
Stephen Harper.
Present.
Mickey Holtz.
Here.
Beth Williams.
Here.
Ken Ratliff.
Okay, everyone's present and accounted for. So how about a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I move that we approve the meeting agenda.
There's been a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, I guess what I need to-
Stephen and Beth.
Stephen and Beth, okay. And it's important for me to explain that so Kathy can catch it, okay? Okay, all those in favor with the meeting agenda approval with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, meeting agenda is closed. So I do have something under proclamations tonight. And we did get a letter from the Court Advocates for Children. And it says, "National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Recognize the importance of communities working together to help families thrive, prevent child miss maltreatment. During the month of April and throughout the year, communities are encouraged to increase awareness about child and family well-being. And work together to implement effective strategies that support families and prevent child abuse and neglect." So with that, I am going to read a proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2021. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of the community in which we live. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that having lasting consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk, promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, therefore, I do hereby proclaim April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And in and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses in the city of Clealum to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to support families whereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. And so I'll sign that. But I would ask, you know, there is a delay to our sound. Can you guys hear me without that speaker up there very much?
Very, very distracting.
So maybe you could turn the speaker to this room down, Rob. And hopefully they can still hear us online.
We can hear you great online, so far.
All right, hang on, everybody out there in the internet world. We're trying to work out the sound here. It's just has just a slight delay which, you know. You know. You got it, okay. Okay, so that's it for my announcements, appointments, recognition. And this is really important. I mean, we all know that, everybody here, that taking care of children is really vital for our communities. So, okay, here we are now to the consent agenda. Is there a motion from the-
I make a motion we accept the consent agenda.
Yeah, you take it, you can have it.
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
It's moved by Matthew Lund and seconded by Mickey Holtz to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll better, I'll slow down you guys. Okay, Beth.
Did you- Yes.
Beth, what they're saying is that you need to like wave at us. We can see your, I can see your picture. If you've got something you want to say, you wave your hand and Mickey and I'll keep an eye on you, okay?
Okay.
Okay, I can actually hear her a little bit on this monitor.
Do you need me closer? Let me put my earbuds in.
I don't know, if I turn this up, I'm gonna get any feedback? So Beth, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here, I'm putting my earbuds in.
Okay, I can, I can hear you a little bit, that's great, okay. Okay, so. Officer reports. Sorry, guys, I'm kind of working through this. We'll hear from our city administrator, Rob Olman, who will give us support.
Okay, can you hear me? Oh, the volume's off. I wanted to walk around. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? In the Zoom, okay, Zoom line, yes.
We can hear them there.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. We, as you know, so last week I had three days of training. And I appreciate that, it was, it was, it was a good learning experience. And I have a couple of books now I need to buy. Always good to learn what you don't know. But I kind of wanted to get you caught up a little bit on some of the grants that are, were just, they're not grants. Let me, let me explain. The, so there's a big infrastructure package, you know, that the governor's trying to put together and through the president and all that type of stuff, right? And so Senator Murray has asked, you know, all municipalities to do a, we're calling it an infrastructure solicitation. It's not a grant, so once they figure out how they're going to present the money out, then they'll, you know, should it go to streets, should it go to buildings? I don't know, however, they'll, they'll do that. Then we have to do the grant. But just, just want to let you know we are participating in that. And we've, we've submitted, of course, our full, full First Street, right? Six, almost $7 million for that. And then we've also, what we're calling sewer system lifecycle restart. Pretty clever, I think, for $5 million, basically, you know, redo a lot of the old infrastructure. So we are participating in it. I'm not sure how it's gonna all come out. But that's, that's some big things that, that we're hoping will come out of this, this whole infrastructure package to restart the economy, I guess. And then some real grants that we're doing is, you probably already know, we're doing the COG. We're doing the distressed county sales tax grant. We just presented last week and should know next month who's gonna get that. We're doing that for our First Street project, $450,000. And then in progress right now with, Mike is leading it up, is the STBG grant that we're doing the Second Street pathway.
We can just listen to him like that.
Basically, it's, it's the entire length of Second Street, like a bike pad type plan. We're gonna get, the grant is to get it completely engineered, designed, and ready, another turnkey or another, you know, shovel-ready plan, ready to go. So, and that's just this year, that's just what we're doing this year. Obviously, we're keeping up on all their other things from last year. And it's just the third month and we've already asked for, like, $11 million, that's all. So, I think that's all I had, unless you had questions? No, no, we don't know that.
We haven't heard. Okay.
Could you guys repeat the questions?
Is there a question? Beth, do you have a-
Was there a question? It sounded like there was.
Sorry, Beth, I was on mute.
Okay.
I asked if we knew what the city's, an estimate of the city's allocation from the American Rescue Plan Act was going to be. And it sounds like we do not yet.
Thank you.
Okay, Fred, Beth, it looks like you've froze up on us.
We have a poor internet connection out here, that could be the problem.
Okay, well, we're gonna continue on. We just lost it over here, so. So next we'll hear from our city planner, Lucy Temple. Can you connect with us?
Yeah, nothing's frozen on my end. Can you hear me okay? All right, I'm getting a couple thumbs up. So planning, just a couple of permitting updates. Gravity Coffee, that used to be Burger King, and then Vertical Bridge, which is also known as the T-Mobile Tower. Those projects have now exited the planning department and headed over to the building department. So you might see some other activity on those in the coming month, weeks, maybe. So far this year, we've had five pre-application meeting requests, which are triggered at a certain level of development or type of development. And we currently have those scheduled now through the end of April, I believe. Last year, we had eight pre-application meetings the entire year. And in both 2018 and 2019, we had four per year. So we're already exceeding our previous numbers and expecting a lot more coming our way. Those meetings are required to get people in the bigger projects headed in the right direction to receiving complete applications. We've also received a boundary line adjustment for the dedication of the 12-acre Community Recreation Center parcel from Suncadia. And that has been given to the city's review team to start processing. And you all know when that's done. Other than that, the Planning Commission held a three-hour meeting last Tuesday. Because we had a lengthy discussion following two public hearings on the Shoreline Master Program update. That was a joint hearing with Ecology, followed by the Critical Areas Ordinance update public hearing. And there were substantive comments received from the state that required such a discussion. And so right now, the consultant and I are working on another update to the Planning Commission. We'll eventually get them to a point where they can confidently make a recommendation to city council. And that project is still on time and on budget. And I'll be reporting back on that from time to time. That's all from planning, unless you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions for the planner? Okay, it doesn't appear to be any, Lucy, thank you for that. And next we'll hear from our Public Works Director, Mike Engelhardt. He's leaving the room.
Thank you. Well, I don't want to have echo from the speaker, so. Trying to save your ears.
There you go.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you so much. I forgot my notes over at City Hall, packing the sound system over. But as Rob said, working with, on the STBG grant as with HLA, as well as our water plan update and as well as our sewer plan update. And working with Lucy and the rest of the team on getting all of our new projects going as far as the incoming ones from citizens around town. My team has been out continually, or continuing to clean out the catch basins around town, doing some street sweeping, trying to do some spring cleanup. Along with that, we worked with Rob and got some really cool GPS units for all of our equipment. Well, most of our equipment, I should say, all the bigger iron and pickup so that now we can, during the winter months, when we get questions from anyone in the public on when are we gonna plow Sixth Street? When are we gonna plow Seven Hill? When are we gonna plow South Side? We can now, real-time, live, see where the equipment is at and they can report back to the citizens without interrupting the operators in the field. So it's mainly for safety reasons, because the operators, you know, we don't want them on their cell phones while they're running the equipment. And we want them paying attention, so. That's gonna be a really handy tool for next season. We're looking forward to it, we've already been using it. It tracks a lot of great information, so. Thanks to staff for supporting us on that. And at this point, I'll let it go with that. Any questions?
I got one, Mike.
Questions for you, Mike, so?
Can you hear me, Mike?
Beth has one.
Oh, Beth.
Any chance, do you guys have any time to grade the gravel in front of people's houses between that and the pavement?
Well, for starters, that's in the ordinance as homeowners' responsibilities for being in charge of your right-of-way. However, as a, because we got lucky and got all of them recycled asphalt grindings, we've already started redoing some of the alleyways. But we're also gonna have enough material left over that, yes, we are gonna go through the unpaved alleyway, or right-of-ways, grade those out, and fill those in with recycled asphalt grindings to hopefully get everything sloped and graded back to the catch basins or drainage, heading towards the proper drainage areas to help eliminate future potholing issues. So to answer your question in short, yes, we're working on that. So we will be notifying residents as their block comes due. We'll be giving as much advance notice as possible so that people that do have vehicles and/or items parked in the right-of-way, they have ample time to work on getting those moved so that we can get in and get them cleaned up and dressed up.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Hearing none, and thank you, Matthew, for that heads up, okay? Okay, next we'll hear from our police chief, Kirk Land.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. Just state for calls of service, we're up to 820 calls so far this year. And we had an accident today at Railroad Oaks. People were asking what that was, it was just a, turned out to be a DUI accident. That was about 11 o'clock today, that's why the road was closed down. We did upgrade our cell phones. We were notified that we were available for a free upgrade. And as soon as he said the word "free," then I started paying attention. And so we did get our cell phones updated. And the generator, the bid went out for the install. And that was awarded to Noble Electric out of Yakima. And hopefully we'll be able to work with them soon to get that scheduled. Part of that bid was that they're going to bring their own portable generator to hook up to the building while the electrical work is being done. Therefore, there'll be no disruption in service for the police department when they do all their electrical work and get hooked up to the, the new generator. And also in your packets, I believe Kathy's provided you some information on an emergency AM radio transmitter that we're getting. And the purpose of that is to be able to broadcast any type of emergency information or even traffic delays for any of the work being done on First Street, parades, anything of that nature, will be able to broadcast that out on AM radio station. All that's in your packet. And if you have any questions, that's, that's all I had for tonight.
Any questions for our police chief?
Yeah, I have a question. Kirk, in addition to the AM radio, have we thought about doing some kind of blast texting option that allows people to sign up for updates like the county has?
Yeah, we're part of that. So anytime there's any type of emergency, like fire evacuations, anything of that nature, their emergency management system does that blast text. So we're already part of that.
Oh, sorry. I was thinking for less emergent things, have we thought about doing something that was, but I don't, I don't know what level rises to whatever bridge does. We thought about doing something that's for less emergent things?
That would just be cost-dependent, I guess. I'd be all for it, I think that's a great idea, if it was budgeted.
All right.
Any other questions for Kirk? Okay. Now we'll go to our chief, Ed Mills, can you hear us, Ed?
Mayor McGowan?
Yes.
Chief Mills is actually not supposed to be on the agenda tonight.
I couldn't quite catch that, what, what did she say?
Chief Mills is not supposed to be on the agenda tonight.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you for that. And Rob, our little screen here isn't working. Okay, this is where it might be handy for me to see who's on there. We're at citizen comments on non-agenda items. And we'll have to, I don't have a screen here, Rob. And we'll see, oh, he'll, he'll fix, he'll fix this one.
It's all right, this will work just fine, there you are.
I don't know. Well, we're, we're still having difficulties here. But is there anybody out there that wishes to address the council? Okay, you can give us some back. Let's see now. I see Darcy's here, Debbie's here, Greg Dorn, Kathy. I'm looking at the participant list to see. There's two Zoom users that I, I don't recognize. So is there anybody on the Zoom meeting that wishes to address the council?
I heard somebody.
Any help I can get from you guys will be welcome, okay? Okay.
Did Kathy say something?
Well, we'll give a little bit of time here.
I think everyone appreciates you giving extra time, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I have to tell you, if you're in the waiting list and you're trying to talk and you don't recognize, I can understand the frustration that somebody may have. But we'll do everything we can to let people participate in this meeting. How about, is there any, anybody just on the phone that we can't see? Okay, all right, well, this, at this part of the meeting where people have a chance to say something is very important. So now we'll go down to public appearances. And the first one we have to hear from is the Chamber of Commerce. And that will be presented by Madison Ford.
Hi, I have a presentation, if I can share it to those who are on the Zoom call. Could the host able, oh, perfect, okay, I see. Are you guys able to hear me, is this okay? Okay, great. Today I'll be going over our tourism data for the month of February. We turned this paid campaign back on in, later in the month, so it looks a little bit different than what we're used to, but we still got a lot done. A lot of our focuses were around business travel, the leisure travel, business-leisure travel in Clealum. We posted an article on quintessential Clealum experiences, highlighted unique menu items from our local businesses. We partnered with Explore Washington State to develop an article on spending an hour in Clealum. So if you're passing by and you only have one hour, what are some must-stop locations? And it was written by Central Grad, who was really passionate about the area, too. We talked about winter recreation and the temporary snow parks that were available in February, as well as our incorporation date. We got to celebrate that in February, woo-hoo! Valentine's Day, giving folks ideas on things to do in Valentine's Day. We found virtual tours, 360-degree virtual tours of both the Carpenter and the Telephone Museum. So we were able to share those out with travelers, talk about our scenic byway, scenic driving, road trips, especially Highway 10 between Owensburg and Clealum, as well as resources for wedding planning, as we're starting to see that increase now that folks are starting to feel more comfortable gathering together again. And every month, we try to feature between 15 to 30 businesses that are tourism-related, so here are some of the ones that we featured in February. As far as the numbers, we had 12,716 users on discoverclealum.com. And 1,387 of those were organic. And so a majority of them comes from our tourism campaign. We had over 22,000 page views and our top pages were gathering spaces, so good to see interest in that. Fun in the Snow in Clealum, our attractions page, information on snowmobiling in Clealum. Our events page, that hasn't been on our top five list for a while now, so again, really good to see. And our dining page with local restaurants. And then, as you can see, there's some top performing search terms there, both organic. So what people are naturally typing in and finding us by, which includes parks, hikes, and Clealum camping, Clealum restaurants, and our paid search terms, which were campgrounds in Washington State, Campgrounds, Washington, a lot of camping-related paid search terms this month. As far as some other projects that we were working on in February, we created a destination development strategy with the state and a lot of the other counties within our region here in central Washington. We all have our own identity, not only as a county, but each municipality on its own. But it does help to have a cohesive strategy with other counties as far as tourism goes and have that direction from our state, which we've been lacking for years. So it's really good to see traction on that. A big project that came out of that is TRED. Working with all of our stakeholders that were a part of this strategy, as well as a lot of the different destinations that were a part of these workshops leading in this strategy. A big common thread came up, and that was that folks don't know where to recreate. And if they do, they get there, it's too busy, or if a power line is down, or if a fire is happening, or a tree is down on the trail, or a parking lot is closed, there's no way for land managers to communicate this information to travelers. So somebody up in the Shalane-Wanachi area developed an app called TRED. And this is a Washington State-based app. We've always struggled with apps because as a destination, like if we created a Clealum app, folks might download it and then maybe use it over the weekend while they're here. But as far as actually keeping folks engaged on an app and keeping it downloaded on their phone, we needed something that was kind of statewide. And bringing this to the table was really exciting. Suncadia is moving over from their app to TRED. We see Wenatchee and Shalane and a lot of other destinations on the east side doing this. And a lot of excitement behind it from our recreation groups. It is able to accommodate different user groups. It's ran on the backend by land managers. And so it's very strategic. It can be hyperlocal. We can have full control over what trails are shown and which are not. And it actually helps with a lot of our upcoming projects to direct folks to spending money on app businesses that help support these things, too. So TRED is really exciting, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback on that. And because of the recent stimulus package, Washington State has actually designated about $2 to $3 million to go towards rolling out this program in Washington State. So we are able to kind of spearhead that, too, and be a part of that conversation and excited to see where this goes over the next couple of months. It should be rolling out here in the next two, two to three months, depending on that funding. I got to do a couple of interviews with businesses as well as the museums. I focused on the Telephone and Carpenter Museum in February. We launched a micro grant application for the county, the consolidated lodging tax funds. So if a nonprofit or an event is applying for up to $1,000 of lodging tax funds for their tourism-related service, then they can do that. So that is open now. It's kind of a rolling application until we run out of funds. And I'm trying to get a lot of the nonprofits I know in upper county to apply for it. But if you know anyone, definitely have them go to our website and apply. It's a super easy application, unlike the longer lodging tax application that we're used to on the consolidated level. I also applied for a grant through the SeaTac Airport to conduct a familiarity tour, a fan tour with different influencers, writers, personnel from in and out of state that have a lot of out-of-state audiences. And this fan tour is really focused on recreation, diversity, and history. So of course, we'll be stopping in Clealum, and we're still putting the pieces together as we recently got this funding. But we'll be able to do a full tour. It'll be two days and one night, and we'll go from Ellensburg through Clealum. We'll be going downtown and checking out some of the historic businesses and walking the Coal Mines Trail out to Roslyn to end the tour there. I've been working with Suncadia, too. They'll be hosting some drive-up movie nights, which will be really exciting. And we're going to have video advertisements before the movie nights with information on coming to Clealum to support our businesses. So that's a really exciting free opportunity for us to reach travelers who might be there. They are conducting these movie nights, rain or shine. They'll have a radio station where folks can hear the audio through their car, actually. And yeah, just another good opportunity for us to get our name out there and draw folks who are in Suncadia right into town. And they'll also be launching a market. This is pretty new. But in early June, they will be conducting a sort of like farmer's maker market at Suncadia. So we're keeping our eye on that and ready to support and collaborate as needed. We are now in phase three, woohoo! So we've conducted some reopening meetings for events across the county to try to educate them on what phase three means and get them excited for hosting their event. We're hoping for a really vibrant and collaborative summer with a lot of folks engaging and coming together as a community. And I'm hiring an events coordinator. So that's a whole nother piece of what we do is our own events. And I know that the Pioneer Parade and Independence Day are a big part of that. So I talked with Seda earlier and did confirm that we're still planning on having our Pioneer Parade. And the fireworks and everything in the traditional fashion, if we're unable to do it, if the Department of Transportation doesn't let us do it on First Street, we're looking at having it be a traditional parade on Railroad or even on Second. But hopefully no virtual video this year, and hopefully not even a reverse parade. We really hope to do this in a safe way where we can have the floats be moving. And so a lot of good opportunity there. We applied for lodging tax funds to host a full Independence Day celebration, and we're awarded for that, including live music and a beer garden and some other exciting components. And so whatever we are allowed to do on the state level, we will be doing and excited to celebrate with the community. And that's it for my quick presentation tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything for anyone on the call.
Stephen, you have a question?
I'd just like to echo a statement that seems to have echoed throughout the land, that if we have to consult higher up authorities in order to celebrate our independence, we're not an independent people. And I think that the citizens of Clealum will rise to the occasion of celebrating independence in similar fashion as they did last year. And if you can't get it on those other streets, Third might be a good venue also.
Duly noted. Thank you. Yep, we're going to do as much as we can. And honestly, as long as it's okay with you guys as a council, that's what matters to us. We want to bring everyone together and celebrate a tradition. So thank you.
Any other questions for Madison? Okay, Madison, thank you for that. It sounds like we might have some fun this Fourth of July.
Yes, thank you.
Go down to the Downtown Association report from Debbie Bogart.
If I could share my screen, please. So Madison's correct. We are, in fact, we're having a preliminary meeting here, I think in another week, discussing what can we do with Pioneer Day? How can we make it work? So we are looking at what we can go ahead and do and hopefully have some good news next month for you. So we are very busy, still welcoming new businesses to town. We were a little behind with miners there, but we did get them a little slack. And Farmers Insurance just came on board as a new owner downtown. And we know we're going to have some more businesses coming open here within the next couple of months. So that's going to be exciting to be able to go ahead and welcome more businesses and work with them. I wanted to share some reflections. We've been asking our committees, you know, what did we do in 2020 that we want to be? What we learned, what can we be proud of, how can we continue to lead recovery? And you have a full list in your report that provided, but one of the things they felt was that we've learned different ways of communicating, not just email, but we're using Zoom and we're walking and talking with people. We're getting the word out in social media. So that's our online presence. And we also work with businesses to develop their online presence more. So there's a feeling that we're still pretty strong, not even the pandemic could stop us, that we're flexible, and we've learned to deal with ambiguity, if I say that word. What can we be proud of? Well, we stuck it out. We provided grant funding for COVID recovery. You know, we took our facade grant funds and we turned them into COVID recovery funds. Plus, we partnered with other organizations and we worked with the city on giving more money out there. So we feel that, you know, we've done a pretty good job with activities. Our Christmas season was very successful. And we've continued to have a good success with our businesses downtown. We have a perk that it's been a really tough shoulder season, that there's been continually on retail going on downtown. So there hasn't been a real panic, but there are concerns. I want to make sure you hear me that there's still concern. How can we continue to lead recovery? Well, we're working on continuing our communication with the businesses and with our community, building that structure. We're looking at what can we do to help educate business owners on things that they might need, so they can be more prepared. We're continuing with our social media presence, which is just picking off like crazy. We've got a lot of people watching our social media, whether it's Instagram, or it's our Facebook, or even our YouTube programs. We're continuing to look at activities. And we're continuing to maintain the pulse of what's happening downtown, not just by staff, but by volunteer and board members. So we have a lot of feet on the ground out in the downtown, and that's been really good. One of the things we wanted to know was economically, how are we doing? How's the downtown doing? So working with Arnett Mobile and Associates, we asked the question, you know, what does it look like for business sales the last two years for Clealum, and particularly the downtown core? When we sent them the core, which is, you know, Railroad, Second, and Teotihuacan, this is the statistics they got back with us. And we were pretty floored. We're pretty excited that the Downtown Association in 2019 helped provide 51.5% of the business sales. And in last year, even with COVID, it was 47.4%. Now, they use Environics, which is a firm that works with Nielsen sources. So it's a very comprehensive, drilled-down information that they can get, and they provide it to a lot of Main Street programs. But I was really proud to see that our downtown is doing a great job of partnering with this community. This takes into consideration that we don't have a safe way in our downtown. We don't have major gas stations in our downtown. We don't have a big box store in our downtown. This is our downtown, and this is what it's doing, even during a COVID season. So that was pretty exciting to get those results back.
High percentage. Yeah, it is.
So we're getting a little committee update. They've all been very busy. I think you're going to hear a little bit about our hanging baskets and containers tonight, but we are hearing that for spring. And we're looking at some new style of hanging baskets and containers. These are really unique and nice, and that they have a leaking system and a water reservoir in them. So they not only do they hold your plants, moisture, fertilize them better, do they have had great success in a lot of places across the United States and Washington, like Crossley, Washington, Buryan, Mount Vernon, many other places are using these. But they also reduce the amount of time that staff needs to water, because they take every two to three days for the hanging baskets, and either two or three weeks for the containers. So we're excited about this. We're working on a drop the basket program so that people can, again, help us purchase the dirt and the flowers that go in these. We're already lining up volunteers to have a Saturday when we can start planting the containers and get them out there looking really nice. So that's coming along. Our outreach committee, which is really formed this year, it's a new committee that's been taken off. They put together this calendar of events, and some of the things we're looking at doing for the first time is volunteer recognition. We haven't had a lot of volunteer recognition, and we have some really great volunteers. What kind of board training do we need? And we need to do an annual meeting. That's required for us to be a downtown Main Street program. The last one we had was in 2019 when we had dinner for everybody over at the orchard. So it's time for us to take a look at, how can we do these? When can we do them? What's the environment? Or, you know, what do we have to follow for health reasons to be able to do this? So help working with our community a little bit more. Our promotions committee, oops, let me go back. Our promotions committee is looking at spring activities and promoting downtown. Soon you're going to see a citywide cleanup or city cleanup, downtown cleanup moved out. You're going to see something about a Mother's Day flower sale, we're putting a flower sale on the streets, different locations, working with the Eagles, Farm and Home, a couple of vendors to have a climate to come down and do some spring plants purchasing. That's, we're looking at activities, how we can flow people through town and still meet those safety requirements, right? And that's, this is our test to where we're going. The economic vitality committee is going to continue to welcome new businesses downtown. We're also in the process of exploring the public market. Can we do a public market downtown? What would it take? How do we manage that? If we do so, it's probably going to be four Saturdays from June through September. It's not going to be every weekend. It's going to be a trial basis to see how it works. Because this is a whole new venue for us to get into. We're also looking at signage on the freeway, on DOT signage, recognizing that there's not a lot of signage for our downtown businesses up there. We'd really like to get them more recognized along that corridor, so people will come through downtown and explore what we have. So that's going to be an ongoing investigation, but we're looking at that also. One of the things that's happening right now, we have some national state updates I wanted to give you. House Bill 1279, it's gone to the House, it's in the Senate. And I know it's going to be some modifications, but basically what it does is it expands the FEO tax cut. It increases it. It moves the midnight scramble. Do you know there's a second wave in April that if there's money left over, any program can go in and claim a certain amount? But you have to do that at midnight. So we're looking at changing that to eight o'clock in the morning, which would be great. And it will increase the amount that each Main Street program can acquire and use each year, which will be really nice. Because as we increase Main Street programs, that funding for us increases, because it is divided by the number of programs that there are in the state. So this is a good point. First, we follow. The National Main Street Conference is all online this year, and there's something there for everybody. We are a National Main Street member. If you happen to go to this link, it's also in the handouts that I gave you, and see that you want to go, please contact me. I can help you get into that with our membership. The same thing for Small Business Day. There's one day, April 30th, set aside just for businesses. We know that entrepreneurship is growing, and this is going to bear towards that. Later this week, I'm going to be doing some training on the American Rescue Plan, that $2.661 billion that's coming out to find out how that fits into Main Street and to our community's ears, businesses here in town. And also taking a look at a community project funding initiative that's coming out, too. So those are things I don't know a lot about yet, but I'm hearing that to learn about them, so we can be more helpful and get the information out to our businesses as much as possible. So that's my report for right now. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Okay. Is there any questions from the council or others online? For Debbie's report? I don't hear any. Debbie, do you know, did that House bill go through, or are they proposing that one that increases funding for?
It's sitting in the Senate. Yeah, it went through the House and it's sitting in the Senate. And I've heard there's some modifications that have been attached to it, but I haven't thought up to it in the last couple of days. There's been a lot of action.
Okay, thank you. Anybody trying to get in, Dr. Debbie, that you can see, council? Okay, Debbie.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. That's a good report. So next we'll have, under the title of Clealum Ridge Fuels Reduction Project, Tonya Morey and Darcy Baratura are going to Tonya Morey and Darcy Baratura are going to give us an update on what's going on there.
Good evening, everyone. May I please have permission to share my screen? I've prepared a slide deck for our presentation. All right, there we go. Give me one moment to get this going. Hi, are you seeing the? Are you seeing the backside of my slides?
I'm seeing the president.
Oh, I don't know why I did that. Let me stop sharing and share it to my other screen. My apologies. All right, now hopefully you can hear me well and hopefully you can see my beginning slide. My name is Tanya Morey and I serve the Nature Conservancy as an Americor member in Clealum doing recreation stewardship and volunteer outreach work. And I'll be presenting this evening with my supervisor, who I will let introduce herself.
Hi, everybody. My name's Darcy Baratura. I'm the Forest Partnerships Manager with the Nature Conservancy.
And thank you for giving us some time this evening to inform you about some fuels reduction projects that we will be conducting on the Clealum Ridge. Oh, and now my slides aren't advancing on the screen.
Great, I'll jump in here. I think many of you are well aware of this just by the virtue of being a leader in Clealum, but we have a forest health problem in central Washington. And back in twenty fourteen, the Conservancy partnered with the Forest Service on some foundational science around the scale of that issue across central Washington. And what we found out was that of the ten million forested acres in central and eastern Washington, two point eight million are in critical need of restoration. And that, and you can see that in this map, in the kind of crescent shape that is, is red there through eastern Washington. At our current pace of projects, it's gonna take over fifty-three years to get that work done and we feel that the communities in our forest deserve better. And this, this peer reviewed research was the foundation for the DNR twenty-year forest health plan. Tanya, do we have a, is the next slide a map of the Clealum Ridge?
That's a nice few slides.
Okay, I'll just mention that the area that we are, well, the reason we're talking to you tonight is because we have planned projects that Tanya is gonna talk about that are adjacent to Clealum and Roslin. And I just wanted to take a moment to mention that as an outcome of the twenty-year forest health strategy, DNR and partners have actually zoomed into that landscape at a, at a more detailed scale and completed a landscape evaluation that the result is that essentially, the bottom line is the Clealum Ridge is one of the highest priorities for forest health restoration in central and eastern Washington. And so we're really excited to be embarking on this project, which we've had in the works for a number of years to really work on restoring health and making, increasing the safety for the community and neighbors to wildfire.
Okay, so a little bit more details about the problem itself. Naturally and historically, majority of our forests will look like this image that you see with around sixty to eighty trees per acre, but common land management practices from the last century and fire suppression have caused our forests to become overstocked and looking like this. And in a forest like this, we have what we call ladder fuels. So these smaller trees and shrubs that if a fire were to roll through, it would provide fuel to carry that fire up into the crowns of the trees. And when a fire burns like this, it's high severity and the trees are less likely to survive afterwards. Whereas in a natural, more natural forest, where there are less ladder fuels, the fire is more likely to stay on the forest floor and be low severity. And this increases the likelihood of the more established and older trees to survive afterwards. So to help our forests get back to a more natural state, we need to thin the trees underneath this red line. And as Darcy previously mentioned, and what we're here talking about are our fuels reduction projects to help us achieve that goal. Here in the green polygons, these are completed mastication units. And we'll be continuing in this orange polygon. And I'll talk more, a little more about each project, but I'd like to orient you to where the projects are first. And we will also be completing a commercial thinning unit and what we call the how-go units over on the east side of the ridge over here. So we'll be doing a hundred and sixteen acres of mastication in this next unit that will begin around mid to late April. And it'll last a couple of months. We'll hopefully have it completed by July. When we are doing a mastication, this machine over here is called a masticator and this piece in the front binds up, chews up any shrubs and small diameter and diseased trees. And you can see a before and after photo here of what it looks like when this machine goes through the forest. And you can see the, there's less fuels here after the masticator goes through. Starting around the same time in mid to late April, we will also be starting the commercial thinning units and the how-go units. This is three hundred and forty acres, quite a bit larger. And it will, is expected to go into two thousand twenty-two, so it will also last quite a lot longer. We're happy that we were able to work with a local contractor out of the T N O A for this project. And they'll be removing economically viable trees with heavy equipment. So a masticator and heavy equipment means that there'll be flying and falling trees in the forest, which is dangerous. So we want to be sure that we're informing the community so that recreators can be aware when they're out on the trails. There will be trail closures on Main Ridge Road, Alliance Road, Rat Pack, Downhill and Climb, Grotto, Beer Can, Middle Trivers and the Canyon Six Trivers. And the loggers will be using Main Ridge Road and Alliance Road as their haul routes. Fortunately, with the work that the Times to T N O A group has put into building trails, there are some alternate routes for hikers and mountain bikers and other recreators to use. And we will be working our best with the contractors to try and open the trails when safe and prioritize work that are around the trails so that we can open them sooner rather than later. And we'll always be adhering to closures that will be posted on the ridge. And we'll also be keeping our Facebook page up to date with trail information for you to check before you go out. So here's some notes about how we plan to notify the community and make sure that recreators are aware. I just mentioned that we'll be making trail signs and that'll be accompanied with yellow tape thrown across the trails so people will know not to use them. And we are creating an informational poster to hang around town as well as within businesses and towns, when neighboring towns. And we've been working internally with our marketing team to create a fact sheet and press release and blog posts to assist with our communications. And you can see here some of the businesses and partners and groups that I intend to make contact with and reach out to. If you see anybody on here that's not listed, please let me know and I'll take note of it so I can add them. And I'll also be posting on social media and doing a social media blast to try and reach folks that way as well. I'll end it here on this map for you to further digest. And if you'd like me to go back to any previous slides, I can do that as well. And again, thank you for this time. If you have any questions, now is the time to ask.
I have a question.
Please.
I have to excuse my ignorance, but you keep describing what happens naturally to trees as like in an uncurated state as not natural. And then you describe the product. I'm not against anything that's gonna be going on here. I think that a curated state is good, but you keep describing that curated state as natural and an overgrown state as unnatural. And since I'm ignorant with these things, maybe you can help me understand why one is called natural and the other one it would appear on the surface, but it's the exact opposite.
Yes, certainly. I'll go back to this slide here that compares the two forest types for us to discuss. I refer to what we see in this forest over here as natural. Because if we were to rewind back in time and go back to a time before we were managing the lands, fire has existed on this land historically for time immemorial. And as fires frequently were burning through these forests, it helps, prevents the forest from getting overstocked. And those smaller and diseased trees and shrubs are getting burned away. So that they weren't there. And the trees also evolved with fire. They have several adaptations, like for example pruning their lower limbs to help prevent fire from reaching it into the crown. And then about a hundred years ago, we began to suppress fire and eliminate them from our landscapes. And so then those fires weren't periodically coming through and burning up the understory and those shrubs and diseased trees. So it became overstocked. I tried my best. Did I answer your question? Okay, if you have anything else to add, Darcy?
Great, that's, that's a great answer. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other question?
It sounds pretty quiet here. So Stephen did that, you were able to get an idea? Okay. Okay, so Tonya, thank you for that presentation and also you, Darcy. Actually, I'm looking forward to seeing some, some activity in the woods myself. Yes, okay, we, Tonya, still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Mickey is wondering what, when they are gonna start it, you say?
Yeah, it sounds bad in here, Sonia, and I just couldn't get when we're gonna move forward with the program.
We don't have a solid start date, but we intend to begin in mid to late April at this point.
I'll chime in that at this point, we're thinking that the mastication will start sooner, probably mid-April, maybe late April. And with the, the how-go thinning, the commercial operation is probably early May at this point. It has to, that project will require a lot more equipment that's heavier duty, has potential to dump damaged soils. And so we just have to kind of wait till the conditions are right so we can get in and set up the landings and everything so they can begin the project. But once it's underway, it's going to be going for almost two years.
So Tonya, you had a, the map, you had a map up and it had dates on it. We're looking at little tiny screens here and I think Mickey will be able to see. If you, could you bring that map back up to show the dates of when you were going to be doing the different?
There you go.
We can, we can point it, so the map is here now. I'm looking at it. And it says above Roslin, a hundred twenty-six acres that'll begin in April through December of two thousand twenty-one. There is another hundred and sixteen acres that's further up on the ridge that's gonna start in April and July. And then there's a three hundred and forty acre parcel that'll begin April twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. So I'm sitting next to Mickey and he can see that screen. I think that helps answer his question.
Thank you, Sonia.
And if I can chime in real quick, that project, the first one that you mentioned, the one hundred and twenty-six acres just above Roslin, that's not a TNC project. That's actually a project that's being completed by the city of Roslin. Since we're doing this outreach work and, and creating these maps, the city of Roslin asked if we could share their project on there too so that the public is also aware of those impacts.
Okay, so, so that project will be going on at the same time as your hundred and sixteen acre project. April through December, okay. So let us point out to Mickey that Roslin is gonna be doing this themselves. And the Nature Conservancy will be doing this part later. What, we have a little four by six picture of the map on our little iPad here and we're both leaning over looking at it. I mean, you may not be able to see that, but we're, you know, looking at it. So I think that helps answer his question.
Good, I'm impressed that you can read any of the words on there.
Okay. So?
If I may chime in one more time, oh, sorry, sorry. I was just going, may I chime in one more time, Mayor McGowan?
Could, I think, yes.
Okay, I was, I was just wanted to reiterate what Tanya mentioned, that these maps will all be available on posters and handouts. We'll have, we'll make sure that the city has copies and they'll be in local businesses. They will be online in a, in a format that's much easier and on the eye to take a look at and to understand. So thanks for your patience with that.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay. We're gonna go down, back to our regular agenda here. And there's no business requiring public hearings. There's unknown finished business and we're going down to a new business and Mike is gonna leave the room so he can speak without an echo and explain to us what the Quadco STBG set aside application is.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Basically what this is, it's in your package, it's just a quick snippet. This is a formality that this has to be in the minutes. And what it is that we're going for is what Rob mentioned earlier. Is we are working with HLA to create a shovel-ready project, which is a bike head path from Stafford Avenue where the new bull bout went all the way down Second Street to the far easterly leg of Short Avenue. The entire funding that we're going or communicating with Quadco and going for is in the sum of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. They have the opportunity to make that a no-match grant, but the city may potentially have to make us a little bit more appetizing to the application process, could offer up to thirteen point five percent as a city share on that. We're working right now, we've got this on the schedule for tonight and next, in, I can't remember exactly, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, but I know in the next coming week or so is when we actually submit our applications. So this had to be done tonight. So it's short notice, it's very unprepared, but that's the gist of it. And so this is more of an FYI to the council that this is a process that we're in the middle of.
Ken, you have a question?
Yeah, Mike. What impact would this project have on, on street parking on Second Street?
So if we get approved the project, this specific stage of the project will have none because we're just going for the grant to have this completely shovel-ready design. However, the design of it is to have the cars parallel park. Then a strip of vegetation slash grass. And then a sidewalk up against the property. So it would help separate the vehicle traffic from the pedestrian traffic to make it safer for all pedestrians that are wandering the streets that are up on the sidewalk. And so hope that answers your question.
So does the sidewalk then become the non-motorized walking and rolling pathway?
Yes and no. So the one side of the street will be non-motorized and the other side of the street becomes, like I said, we don't have the complete design yet, so I can't give you a hundred percent on which side of the street it will be, but the, the grand scheme of it is to separate pedestrians and vehicles.
Well, the reason I bring it up is on the planning documents, I don't have them with me right now. Well, the reason I bring it up is on the planning documents, I don't have them with me right now, unfortunately. I didn't, I didn't see this. But what I saw was the typical section replacing the parking on one side with this path.
Or they'll still be parking on each side. It's just it shrinks up the parking to where it requires them to be parallel parking instead of diagonal parking.
Okay, okay, fine.
So Mike, what kind of action do we need to take on this?
At this point, nothing. This is more of an informational post of me letting the council know that this is in the process. And if there's not any objections to us proceeding, then we will continue to proceed.
Just so there's no impact that there's parking on both sides of the street. If there were not, I would object to proceeding. I mean, if we're losing one side of the street on-street parking, I, I don't think it's a good idea.
No, if you look at, if you drive down Second Street and we have 100, we're pretty close to 100 foot right of way. If you added a sidewalk, which we have existing, and then a five-foot grassy buffer, you still have I'm, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but an extra astronomical amount of room for cars to park in there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, real good. We're thankful for inheriting that 100-foot right of way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, Mike, can I jump in real fast? This is Ben. Can you hear me there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Super. So just to clarify, as part of this application process, there is an action required by council essentially to approve the submission of the application. And, and if there is a dollar amount associated with the match. And so as, as Mike had mentioned, Honorable Mayor and council members, it is, it's, it's a voluntary match typically on federal highway administrative grants such as this one. There's a 13 and a half percent match. But with this program, it's, it's a 0%. However, you can, you can add additional city funds if you would like, but it's not even part of the, the scoring process in the scoring criteria this time around.
So again, what do we need to take any action? I thought I heard you say something about that.
Yeah, the council action would be for the formal submission of the funding application.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we make a formal request to the funding application with a, at this point, a zero contribution. And anything higher than that, we would need a budget adjustment. So for now, I, I make a motion that it be zero and seek a second.
So there's a motion by Ken and Ken Ratliff, counsel, and seconded by Mickey Holtz. The motion is that we authorize the submission of the CB grant for Second Street multi-use pathway design and that there be at this time a 0% match included. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, questions on the motion?
Is there not already a sidewalk that connects Stafford to Short anyway? On both sides of the street?
I believe it's discontinuous.
It's, it's, it's.
I mean, I, I walk Second Street every single day and I, there's broken sidewalk and I realize we need new sidewalk. But is this a replacement of sidewalk in, in a sense?
Yes.
That's a question for Ben or Mike. The question is, are we, we're, I guess, are we going to replace that kind of worn-out sidewalk in the process?
Yeah, I assume now as council member Weaver, now is asking a question.
Yeah.
Yes. So the sidewalk on the south side, it, it varies in width between three and five feet wide. And as you mentioned, there are some several panels that are either deteriorated or settled. And in this multi-use pathway, it would be a 10-foot pathway that would replace the sidewalk on the south side where it would be ADA compliant as well.
That's very cool.
Yeah, and the, the trend with, with the south side there was for progression with the, the pathway as you head up the hill, rather than having two crosswalks to, to cross Second Street again. So that was the, again, like, like Mike said, you know, nothing's set in stone at this point. But in terms of how the application is being put together, it would be the sidewalk slash multi-use path on the south side. And then the sidewalk on the north side would remain, but be untouched.
Okay, any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, anybody listening? Oh, there's Beth. All right, thank you for that, Beth. Are those opposed? Hearing none, the formal application has been approved to be submitted. Okay, now, the CETA lodging tax application, Stephen Harper's going to walk us through that.
Yes. I'm always entertained by certain figures that are placed in these applications, AKA the number of hotel nights that are projected. But it's the first time that this project has been presented to the lodging tax in this way. Long and short, there's an ask for about 17,500 for the hanging baskets and planter boxes. Why the amount is so large is because we're actually doing a capital purchase of the equipment that'll be able to be used in future years. But it's been given as to the design of these so that they'll require less maintenance in the form of less watering, et cetera. And, and also city time has been considered in this application. And so we've looked at it as a committee and we recommend it in the amount of $17,931 requested for the planters and hanging baskets. I would like to also note that there's, they do have skin in the game. About 5,000 is projected to come from, from Secret Valley Gardens and from some fundraisers that they're working out. And so this is a worthy project and I would recommend it. A motion to that effect, that the council adopt the 2021 City of Clayham Lodging Tax Request from CETA for the hanging baskets and planters.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Stephen Harper and seconded by Matthew Lund to approve a lodging tax application from the Downtown Association for the amount of 17,000 what?
$931.
900 something? Okay, is there questions on the motion?
I have a question, Stephen. I couldn't hear you very well down on this end of the, the hall. The, the 17,931 is for flower baskets and?
And so for flower baskets, their installation, their use, et cetera. And then we, but in the planters also. And the planters make up about 5,000 of the total and about 2,200 of it is the baskets. And they'll be throughout, the, the idea is to be able to expand it. Last year, it didn't go as far down, you know, throughout Clayham as it, as it could have. So the idea is to expand the number of baskets, the, you know, the breadth of their outreach, et cetera. And the planters where baskets aren't feasible, because like the other side, you know, the, the side of the road like that, like that the Radio Shack and Mike's Tavern, et cetera, they're able to have hanging baskets, but the other side of the road is kind of left out. And so the idea is to put the planters on the side, you know, it's not feasible to hang baskets.
And the planters are permanent or are they just seasonal?
They are seasonal, but they are permanent assets of the city.
And then the, the part of this 18,000 to 17,931, is that part, and I, I'm sorry if I, if you are, I'm having you repeat this. I couldn't hear very well. Is that, part of that considered the cost it's going to be to water and care for them all?
Correct. That's been figured into this so that the city is not shorted there. So, yeah, exactly the city. So the reimbursement is part of this, the reimbursement of city time that's going to be used to maintain it.
And is that Mike's team that's watering?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I'd like to add a little bit, something I know about these, the planters and the baskets are designed that have a reservoir in them so that when they water them, they will stay watered longer, two or three days roughly. And so they'll stay fresher and purer your longer. Is that right? Okay, any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those favor with aye?
Aye.
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 And there's Beth. Okay, so it's unanimous. Are those that are opposed? Hearing none, the lodging tax application is approved. Thank you, Stephen. So Beth, you have the floor. You're going to give us a little update on the Legislative Procedures Committee handout that we have tonight?
Yes, let me get back to it. Sorry, I just lost the, can anybody hear me okay?
Yes.
And do you, have you had a chance to look at your document yet?
I've looked at it.
It's actually not as complete as I'd hoped it would have been for you to look at. I thought we were going to have all three chapters and we're also missing something in, in there about the mayor and mayor pro tem. We have yet to fill that out. Basically, this is as far as we've gotten so far. And we were mostly wanting to know what your, your thoughts are about the document at this point. Does anybody read it enough to know or? They're thinking. Okay, I'll shut up for a minute.
From what I see, we're going in a right direction and I look forward to being able to see a finished copy and be able to discuss it between the council as a full entity.
Okay. All righty, that's pretty much all I really had from my report unless Matthew has something to add?
I was just going to say we're halfway through chapter three and I think we'll finish that tomorrow. So hopefully we will have another update, at least another chapter at the next meeting.
Okay, thank, thank you, Matthew and Beth for that.
And we'll be working on the mayor pro tem section also.
Hey, so, okay, we're at a point now in the meeting where we're going to go into an executive session. And so what I have, the city will now meet in executive session for, wow. How much time do we need?
Would recommend an hour.
Is there, did someone ask Alex how long? I'm having trouble hearing what.
I would recommend an hour.
Okay, all right. A period of 60 minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or possible litigation which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in its official capacity is or is likely to become a party pursuant to RCW 42.30.110. So the council is not expected to make final action following the executive session. If an extension is required, the mayor will emerge from the room in which the session is being held and make the following announcement. And I'll tell what time and how long we'll extend it. And so at this point, we're going to exclude the public for these purposes. So this is a little different for us, but we'll be basically ending the public portion of this meeting. We don't expect to take any action. And it's now 7:35. Should we give ourselves five minutes to get this started? Say that again? All right, we'll use our time.
I'm going to go powder my nose again.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, we, it's 8:35. And we're going to continue our executive session for an additional 30 minutes, which will take us to, what, 9:06? Kathy, were you able to get that?
I did, thank you.
Okay, so with this, I'm going to resume our executive session. Sorry.
Are we back on there?
Are we in executive session again, Mayor?
Kathy, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Kathy?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so we're back online?
I'm going to take my mic off.
It's 9:06. We've come out of the executive session. We're going to require 15 more minutes. And we'll be back at 9:21. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll go back into executive session. Okay?
Motion, motion to adjourn.
We're, we're back from executive session. There'll be no decision made and there's a motion to adjourn. The meeting is over.